We're... Good morning, everybody. 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 We're... Good morning, everybody.[626.13]
To help us to be the people that you want us to be. Help us to fulfill the plan that you have for each one of these dedicated councilmen and councilwomen who have given their lives at the present moment in time to use their skills and their leadership that you have blessed them with to help other people. Mother Teresa of Calcutta has said, "We will be judged by, 'I was hungry and you gave me to eat.' I was naked and you clothed me. I was homeless and you took me in." Hungry not only for bread, but hungry for love. Naked not only for clothing, but naked of human dignity and respect. Homeless not only for want of a room of bricks, but homeless because of rejection. We have also heard, "Do unto others as you would have others do unto you." That is what you councilmembers are doing with your lives. You are putting many of the works of mercy into practice in your leadership positions that your fellow men and women have elected you to. I feel that coming here today gives me an opportunity to join in prayer with all of you, and I can share with you what I shared with my students during the forty years that I taught elementary school. And I'm just going to add here, September fifteenth, it was fifty-three years ago that my mother and father and brother drove me down the street to enter the convent. I had turned eighteen just three months before that, and my mother and I were in tears, missing each other before I got out of the car. I used to tell my students, for forty years I would tell this to my students, I tell them at report card time, "When you die and go to heaven, your Creator is not going to look at your report card, but he may say to you, 'Did you love me? Did you try to lead souls to me by your good example?' That applies to each one of us also as adults. O Creator of each of us here present this morning, we desire to do your will. Please bless and guide the members of this council as they strive to use their lives to help Your Creator is using your hands, your feet, your voice, to assist the people that you meet or whose lives you may influence in a variety of ways. Please help each one present to always remember that you are using them in a very special way, in an important leadership position, to touch the lives of those who have entrusted them with their confidence by electing you to this very influential office that you now hold. That is to be used for the good of others. The people who elected you look up to you and trust you to do your best to help them. May you always strive to be worthy of their trust. Let us remember that by your example and by your actions, you can help to make this world a better place because you are in it now. I shall pass through this world but once. If therefore there is any good thing I can do or any kindness I can show to my fellow creatures, let me do it now. Let me not defer it nor neglect it, for I shall not pass this way again. It is better to be thought kind than to be thought important. On behalf of the people and the leaders at City Hall, I entreat you, our Creator, to send your mighty power upon them and keep them in the palm of your hand. I pray very specially for the leaders of our nation and for all the leaders around the world. And so let us end our moment of inspiration with our own individual silent moment of prayer, asking His help to live our lives for Him. We'll take just a moment of silence for your own personal reflection. Thank you, our Creator, for listening to our prayer today. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister Rose. Also, before beginning with today's agenda, we do have one presentation scheduled. Chair recognizes Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, it gives me great honor today to welcome this delegation from China. This morning it gives me great pleasure, too, to introduce a distinguished delegation of visitors from the Judicial Office of Sichuan Provincial Government in Chengdu, China. I got it okay? All right. The group is in the United States to share ideas and information regarding the legal system here and in China. While visiting, they will meet with individuals in the field of law at local and the federal levels. They will also travel to Washington, D.C., New York, San Francisco, and Hawaii. At this time, I'd like to call upon Kokoa Weldon, who is a member of the welcoming party for this delegation.
Good morning to you.
Good morning.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Padilla, Mr. President, councilmembers, greetings and good morning to all of you. On behalf of the delegation that welcomes our friends from China, may I extend to you greetings from their president, the people of the great nation of China, Jiang Zhenmeng, to our president, Mr. George Bush, and to all of the citizens of the United States. In my brief comments to you this morning, may I say to you that even though we know that for the most part policies are set by elected leaders of both nations, the reality is that the people of both nations are being combined into one global community. Though we may participate this morning in greetings of accolades and welcoming, the truth of the matter is, we are joining each other into one global community where cooperation must be stressed. This cooperation will take the form of dialogue, discussion, and negotiation. The great giant of Asia is awake now, and our participation in this matter as citizens of the United States is to make certain that both of our strategic and economic interests combine into cooperation, not confrontation. So at the level in which we are participating this morning, that is, they viewing our judicial processes, let us influence them in an affirmative way, because these individuals will return to their nation having had just a taste of how things are done in the United States. Whether we take this matter lightly or whether it weighs heavily in our heart, the truth is, they will take these ideas of which you and I will convey to them. Not only they, but their children, their community of citizens, will be influenced by what we show them about how a judicial process can operate and work for a nation that is emerging as a giant. So for our global community and as citizens of the United States, for our strategic and economic interests, which we trust will always combine into cooperation and not confrontation, I bid you that we welcome them to our great nation, this great city of Los Angeles, and we shall do our part to make certain that they are influenced in an affirmative way of doing business as a country. Thank you.
And I'm Ms. Mary Stewart.
Thank you. It's indeed a pleasure to be here on behalf of this delegation from Chengdu, China, and to also have the privilege to meet the Honorable Nate Holden. And on behalf of this delegation, we would like to thank you for the courtesy and all of the information that has been bestowed on this program and this delegation. And as Kokoa's just said, is that this is something that they will take back home to their own families, their own coworkers. This will make a great difference in both of our countries. So with that, I'd like to now welcome Mr. Lee Zhengzhang, please, who would like to say a couple of words in behalf of his country. On behalf of our delegation, thank you very much. It's indeed a pleasure to be here in this great hall this morning. And I hope that you will accept this privilege to us, for us to invite you to come and visit us in our great city, too. And we hope that the friendships that will be derived today here will be lasting ones forever. And at this time, we would like to take a moment to thank Mayor Kenneth Hahn for all of the work that he has done in order to make this presentation today acceptable. And to thank everyone here in this room for your kind attention and the privilege of meeting each one of you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Los Angeles is a beautiful city, one that we have enjoyed very much, and I know that you're very proud of your city and the work that you've done here today. And they look forward to seeing the rest of the United States and to also see other parts of the judicial system. And they hope that you will come and visit them inside of their judicial system in China. And with that, we would like to again say thank you for all of your attention. Okay. And then, thank you once again for all of the kind attention that you have given to this delegation.
我爱洛杉矶
I love Los Angeles.
谢谢
Before I present the certificate of welcome, I want to invite the mayor's office over
Mr. President, members of council, distinguished guests, on behalf of Mayor Hahn, the Office of Protocol in the City of Los Angeles, we would like to extend a warm welcome to you and do and hope that you enjoy your stay here with us. Please don't hesitate to contact us if you need any more help, assistance, or information. Thank you very much.
We have some gifts for them.
Oh, you have gifts? All right. One for me, too. Madam President, Mr. President members, I want to thank Mr. Weldon and Ms. Mary Stewart for being goodwill ambassadors and representing us as they received this delegation on its tour throughout the United States. I'd like to remind each and every one of us that the relationship being normalized as they are with mainland China did not come easily. It was at a risk that was taken by one of our former presidents, not known for taking risks, but he did, in fact, Richard M. Nixon, was the one who normalized, initiated the normalizing the relationship between mainland China. It's a big power in the world, and it's one globe, and we have to live on it together. And this is not the new, this is the continuation of that which he began many years ago. I know President Ford was also involved in that as well, and many presidents thereafter, which would never have happened, had not Mr. Nixon got it going for us. So I just wanted to make note of that and also present the certificate of welcoming to the delegation as they visit the United States. Mr. Lee?
Right here, right here.
Did you get all that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Let's welcome our visitors once again. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Clerk, first item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Mr. President, before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued. Item number ten, a request from Council District Three to continue that matter till October first.
Members request to continue item number ten without objection.
Item number fifteen, a request from Councilmember Miskowski to continue that matter till October first.
Members, request to continue item number fifteen without objection. That shall be continued as well.
Item number fifty-one, a request from Council District Seven to continue that matter till September twenty-fourth.
Item fifty-one, members, without objection, continue till September twenty-fourth.
And item sixty-four, Councilmember Miskowski for Mr. Ridley Thomas has requested that matter be continued one week till September twenty-fourth.
Item sixty-four, also without objection. Mr. Weiss.
Also on behalf of Mr. Ridley Thomas, could we please continue item twenty-eight for a week?
Item twenty-eight?
Yes, please.
Twenty-eight for one week? How much time?
What's that?
How much time?
One week.
For one week. New hearing date being September twenty-fourth. Without objection, that matter is continued. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, first on the agendas are commission appointments. Do you wish to consider those at this time?
Let's hear from the commission nominees.
Okay. Item number twenty-two is commission appointments, reapportment of Dr. Sharon Watson to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families. There is Arts, Health, and Humanity Committee report recommendation.
Is Ms. Watson here? Please come forward at this time. Public hearings haven't been held in committee. Members, I believe we have a committee report recommending approval of this nominee. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Gruel.
I am so pleased that Sharon, in her busy schedule and all the issues that she deals with, is willing to serve on this commission. Your expertise, we've had the pleasure of knowing each other for a long time and dealing with children's issues. I think that we are looking to you for advice and counsel as we move forward, how we can strengthen some of our policies and programs, how we can ensure that we lobby heavily to the state and federal government for some of the funds, as well as the county, which you obviously are very familiar with, to coordinate our efforts on children, youth, and family, and to try to get as much money as we can to address some of the issues in those neighborhoods. Because we find, I opened a skate park on Sunday, Saturday, and, you know, the kids were so excited, they had somewhere to go, something to do. And we often only hear about the bad things that happen with our children. So I'm hoping that we can work together to expand the kinds of programs. Obviously, this was wrecking parks, but there are other types of activities and policy issues that come from the commission. But I'm just pleased that you're willing to serve the city and look forward to working with you, and I know you'll get strong support here from the council today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Labange.
Thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles, and I just wanted to put a request in for our commission to help push those young people to our neighborhood councils. Many of our neighborhood councils are forming throughout the city, and there's been not as great a participation of young people as all would like. So there's a lot of doors that can be opened when it relates to neighborhood through that process, and I'm just pleased to encourage you to find a way to make that happen so that we could have more youth participation. I myself benefited twenty-eight, nine years ago, as a member of Tom Bradley's Youth Commission. Raise your hand if you're on Bradley's Youth Commission. Where's Wendy Gruel? Okay, good, very good. Mark Ridley Thomas. And I know Ed Reyes participated as well. So it does have an impact. Thank you again for your service.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city. Members, before proceeding to the next commission nominee, unless there's an objection, I'd like to go through the agenda and call item special. Mr. Clerk, first batch of items, please.
Mr. President, items numbers one through twenty-one, with the exception of ten that has been acted on, and fifteen are items for which public hearings have been noticed.
I do have cards on items number eight, item fourteen, and item twenty. Let's call those matters special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Items one through twenty-one?
Mr. President, item number thirteen requires a motion from the floor. It's a public convenience necessity item.
Is there a motion on item thirteen? Seeing no motion, let's call that matter special. Mr. Holden?
Twenty-one, Mr. President.
Twenty-one called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Items numbers twenty-six through thirty-six on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items twenty-six through thirty-six now before us. Members, any specials?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven called special by Mr. Burnson. Thirty-four called special by Mr. Burnson as well.
Three and thirty-five, please.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-five called special by Ms. Miskowski. Members on items that have had public hearings in committee and motions from the floor would be required to reopen the public's hearings. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Items numbers forty through seventy-four on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I do have cards on items forty-three, fifty-two, sixty-two, and sixty-six. So let's call those matters special. Members wishing to call any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Yes. Could you hold item fifty-two T on the table, please?
Fifty-two, we do have cards on item fifty-two, but that is called special.
Thank you.
Any other specials? Mr. Holden?
For information, I'm going to call forty, forty-one, and fifty-one for special.
Forty, forty-one, and fifty-one?
Fifty-one has been continued.
Mr. Holden, item fifty-one has been continued. Any other specials?
Counselor, item seventy-nine is to be received and filed.
Okay. Excuse me a second. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items number seventy-five and seventy-six are closed session items. Do you wish those to remain on the desk?
Let's hold closed session items on the desk.
Item number eighty-two on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has been noticed.
Item eighty-two?
Correct.
We do have cards on item eighty-two, I believe. We do. Let's call that special. Mr. Burnson, I understand you wish to make a motion to item seventy-nine?
Yes, is that... I would move receive and file as the commissioner does not wish to be reappointed.
Okay. Members, motion to receive and file item seventy-nine. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item seventy-nine is received and filed. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number eighty-three on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item eighty-three. Public hearings are therefore satisfied. Members wishing to call eighty-three special? Item eighty-three, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
On the supplemental agenda, items numbers eighty-four through eighty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Seeing public hearings satisfied, are there members wishing to call any items special? Items eighty-four, eighty-five, and eighty-six. Ms. Hahn?
Eighty-four special for Councilman Holden. Who's on the phone?
Item eighty-four called special. Any other specials? Items eighty-five and eighty-six before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings you back to commission appointments.
Okay, before we go back to the next nominee, Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla. I'd like to ask, we have fifty-six and fifty-eight. Go forthwith, please.
Forthwith on fifty-six and fifty-eight.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Item number twenty-three is commission appointments, the appointment of Mary Wong to the Commission on Disability. There is an Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee report recommendation.
As Ms. Wong comes forward, members, we do have a recommendation from committee. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to say a few words about Mary Wong. I recommended Mary for this commission because she is a longtime community activist, a longtime advocate on behalf of seniors and those with disabilities, and is very involved not only in her immediate community, but has experience at the state level, county, and city. So I think she will be an excellent appointee and bring a voice that has not been previously on this commission. I hope that you will support her recommendation unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. Forthwith, next item.
Item number twenty-four is the appointment of Lisa Bacacigala to El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority. There is an Arts, Health, and Humanity Committee report recommendation.
Members, this, too, has been heard in committee. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I know Ms. Bacacigala is a resident of CD-13, a close neighbor, actually, in my own neighborhood, but I wanted to praise her community work. The committee unanimously recommended her, and I hope that everybody will do the same today. Been a great voice throughout this city in helping through her work with Vons to combat hunger and other things locally, but she'll be a great commissioner, and we welcome her aboard.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah. Not only did Lisa live in your district now and close to you, she grew up on my block, three doors from my house. And I know, I know. But Lisa, I thank you for all you've done in the past, and now in this appointment here. I know Councilman Pacheco is not here, but the pueblo is an absolutely wonderful part of our city's history, and much work has been done to restore it, and the efforts and the activity just this past weekend down there. The only little thing that I want to request is go and look at some of the other revitalizations of old towns throughout Los Angeles County, be it in Whittier, be it in Old Town Pasadena, Santa Monica, in San Pedro, and the work in San Pedro, and all the efforts down there. And get parking back on Main Street. Get parking back on Los Angeles Street. Bring people. People attract people. And I think it's just real important to try to have that and open up the Main Street side of the shops, if you could. Talk about that, discuss that. The Pico Building's beautiful, and I'm just excited about that you're there because you have such a great love of Los Angeles. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
My best to all your family.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations. I know you're going to do a great job. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number twenty-five is the appointment of Laura Beth Heisen to the Board of Animal Services Commission. There is a Public Safety Committee report recommendation. There is a Public Safety Committee report recommendation.
As she comes forward, are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Item number 37 is the reappointment of Christopher Pack to the Board of Rec and Park Commissioners. The mayor has submitted a recommendation. Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee waived.
Mr. Pack is now before us. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Labange?
Samida Chingu, thank you for your service to your great commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Pack, any response?
Ah, 감사합니다.
Other members? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Get back to work. Next item.
Item number 38 is the appointment of GR Sam Overton to the Commission on Disability. The mayor has submitted this recommendation, and the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee waived.
As Sam comes forward, are there members wishing to be heard on this item?
Thank you.
Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the fine job. Next item.
Item number 39 is the reappointment of Linda Smith to the Commission on the Status of Women. Personnel Committee waived this. The mayor has submitted this nomination.
Welcome back, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving the city. Next item, please.
Item number 77 on the supplemental agenda is the reappointment of James Silcot to the South Los Angeles Area Planning Commission. There is a Planning Land Use Management Committee report recommendation.
Welcome, Mr. Silcot. Members wishing to be heard on this item? Public hearing haven't been held in committee. Mr. Burnson moves approval. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, Mr. Silcot is emily qualified to serve and be reappointed to this post. He's a retired architect, having worked for the kind of Los Angeles also instrumental in designing the Jewell Stein Eyes Clinic at UCLA, and many other facilities that's providing service to meet the needs of others in the state of California, State Colleges and universities. You just don't know his background, but he's extensive. He was a war hero in Korea and served the country well. He's also the person who gives back to the community. In fact, he's given major scholarships at Howard University School, from which he was graduated, field of architecture. So Mr. Silcot is kind of a rare breed. Most people take, and he's earned his way, and he's giving back every day, and I want to thank him for the service that he's giving us here in the city of Los Angeles, has been for years.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Zine?
Mr. Burnson moved it. Those kind words from Councilmember Holden, you obviously deserve this position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Silcot.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 78 is the reappointment of John Fiersen to the Board of Transportation Commissioners. Transportation Committee waived consideration, and the mayor has submitted the nomination.
I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this nominee. We have a motion to approve. Mr. Zine?
Just one moment. Not my moment for you, but I know Mr. Burnson wants to get this approved quickly. I just want to make a comment that recently was a Transportation Commission meeting out in the West San Fernando Valley at West Hills Hospital. Transportation Commission heard many of the issues concerning the issues in the West Valley. I appreciate the commission coming out there, and I would encourage you and your commissioners to do those meetings in the communities. They really appreciate it. They really enjoy it. And I know your history in traffic goes way, way back, so you're well prepared and well qualified. And I was very impressed with the way the meeting was conducted out at West Hills Hospital. So you got my support.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, once again, I state that Mr. Fiersen is currently serving on the commission. Transportation emily qualified, once again, having worked in that department, Transportation Department, with the city for many, many years. In fact, he retired from the city of Los Angeles, from my staff, but he spent more than 20 years, 25 years, Department of Transportation, doing the job that he now serves as the commission. So he knows the inside operations department. The mayor made a good selection by choosing Mr. Fiersen, and I too would urge unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Before we open the roll, Mr. Labange?
Thank you. Mr. Fiersen, thank you for your service, and I like what Mr. Holden said, but also your experience in the Department of Transportation. You worked when you were with the police department in traffic control and direction, which is a very important operation now that we've started again. We do that now on Ventura Boulevard and impacting intersections. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. And I just wanted to stand tall for traffic officers, and I hope you continue to be the advocate that you are, to do intersection direction, because there's impacted intersections that we can't do anything about. As you know, what are the three Es of traffic? You remember? Engineering, education, and enforcement. And all those things are very important. So I just wanted to put a strong plug in for traffic control at intersections. I know we're doing Ventura Boulevard and heavy the canyon roads that come in, but I want to continue that and see it done throughout the city where we could make it easier for people to move safely through neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard at this time, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your ongoing service. Next item?
Item number 80 is the reappointment of Portia Collins to the Board of Taxicab Commissioners.
Ms. Collins comes forward. Members wishing to be heard on item 80? Seeing none. Ms. Collins must be doing a good job. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 81 is the appointment of Bernardo Silva to the Board of Taxicab Commissioners.
Mr. Silva is now before us. Members wishing to be heard on item 81? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you for your service. Mr. Clerk, all commission nominees appointed or reappointed today, let's send these matters forthwith, please. Next item.
The first item called special is item number eight. And as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard, this is an item notice for public hearing.
Members, item number eight now before us. The council calls forward Mr. Mort Allen.
I just wanted to say one thing quickly. This shows down as CD five when it's CD two. We seem to be having a problem that the records don't give the right council districts. We had this with a hearing last week when it was the wrong council office. So I just wanted to see if there's some way that we can't get these things right, so it's the correct council office on these agendas, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. This closes public comment on item number eight. Members wishing to be heard on item number eight? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 is called special. And as much as a motion is required from the floor, this is in Council District 10. It is a public convenience necessity application. A motion is required to either grant or deny.
Members, item number 13 now before us, a matter in Council District 10. Is there a motion from the floor? If there's no motion from the floor, we... Mr. Holden?
Right.
May I ask you to press your button, please? Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this is a Savon Drugstore requesting authorization to sell alcohol beverages at the new site located at La Brea and Rodeo. And I might add that this is not a new business moving in that exists at this time, located Savon's diagonally across the street at La Brea and Rodeo, in a different shopping center area. They're going to construct a new building there, and they claim that it'd be neighborhood-friendly, and I think that we should approve this motion.
You moved it? Then I'll second it. All right. As long as I don't get a bad article on it, they got to understand that this is good. You move it. They might write about me moving it.
There's a motion. There's a second. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 14 is an item notice for public hearing. There is a member of the public who wishes to be heard.
Item 14 now back now before us. Chair calls forward Mr. Gordon Merly to address the council.
Gordon Merly?
Is Mr. Merly still with us? Mr. Gordon Merly, this is your opportunity.
Gordon Merly, president of Woodland Hills Homeowners Organization. We're here today to support what went from plum, but also to make a comment that this should have never had to get to this point if there was a mechanism in the city whereby, when both sides agree, that a letter of correction could be made by the hearing officer and put it all away. I understand the city attorney is now beginning to work on something, but it really would be who this council, if you're going to treat both developer and residents well, that you make mechanisms work so it doesn't take up staff's time, the individuals' time, and hold up a developer from being able to proceed until all of this goes through to get some of their building permits. So we would like to see that very rapidly done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This closes public comment for item number 14. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, colleagues, I just asked that we move the plum report on this matter.
Okay, there's a motion. Mr. Reyes seconds. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item 14 is approved. Next item, please.
Also notice for public hearing is item number 20. A member of the public wishes to be heard.
Council calls forward Mr. Michael Keely, followed by Kevin Huling. Ms. Keely?
Mr. President, members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. This is a property owned by friends of mine for the last 20 years, long before I came to, or some would say flunked out, a boot camp here, that has been identified by CD eight for the largest animal regulation shelter in the country. You've got a letter before you from John Peterson, who is condemnation counsel to the property owner. I will not appear in any way or participate in any litigation involving the city, obviously, mostly because I haven't seen the inside of a courtroom since I was sworn in 20 years ago. But in part, I just wanted, as Mr. Peterson's letter says, this is a very complicated relocation. These are furniture manufacturers. There are 40 or 50 employees there. These are good-paying jobs, well above the city's living wage standard. You are obviously under pressure to commit and spend the bond money that the voters have approved, so you want things to move along. But if you push at the absolute maximum pace, I'm afraid that you will see these jobs leave the city of Los Angeles, or worse yet, you will see a business, which is presently thriving, encounter long-term difficulty as a result of that. So we're just here to ask that relocation efforts begin immediately so that these businesses can be relocated, hopefully within the city of Los Angeles, and also to ask that you instruct staff to give us the maximum feasible time to relocate these businesses. We think that while you're designing the new animal shelter, we can move and be out of there and not get in your way, but what's the most important thing to achieve that is a dialogue between the affected parties so that we can move intelligently. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. Mr. Kevin Huling, are you here? Okay. This closes public comment for item number 20. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item 20 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21 is an item notice for public hearing called special by Councilmember Holden.
I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item 21. We shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this change in retirement for those who worked 30 years and attained the age of 50 can retire without any reduction of any rights. It's a good idea for two reasons, Mr. President, members. Number one is that it gives that individual an opportunity to exit, number one. And number two, it gives us an opportunity to reduce the workforce without imposing any real hardship on those specific individuals who choose to take that way out. I think the CEO want to come and make some comments on that. Do you? And also, it's just until next year. I think we're going to have some budget problems for the next two or three years, and the next time this is negotiated, it should not be for one year, and the city attorney can respond to this, that we ought to, Mr. Puchioke, look at maybe three years, two years, three... So the people who are 47 know they can leave at 50 or 51 with 30 years of service, and we can adjust the workforce accordingly. Those funds don't come from the general fund when they retire. They come from the retirement program. Likewise with DWP, when they did this some time ago, when they gave the golden handshake, they reduced their workforce and, of course, reduced the general fund for that operation. So I think that since the mayor is going to have to make some adjustments, you're making the recommendation, why don't we just do three-year package or two years next time around? So those employees will have some advance notice about what they can do when they turn 50, 51, whichever the case may be. How does that sound?
I understand. When we negotiated this change, we were faced with an expiration date of the current 50/30 program, and that's September 30. We decided to extend it for one year. However, we're in the process now, the ongoing process, of negotiating our retirement benefits, and we'll take your recommendations into consideration as we go through the continuing process of negotiating our retirement benefits. But we're dealing with this expiration date.
I think it'll be a benefit to both the employee...
I understand.
...and to the city. The mayor has adjusted his budget for the upcoming year in the workforce.
Okay.
That you will consider.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on item 21? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number thirty-two called special by Council Member Miskowski. Excuse me. Item number twenty-seven called special by Council Member Burnson.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, this item is on the renewal of the Chatsworth bid. And I have a copy of the audit which was done by the city clerk's office. And these are some of the recommendations. First of all, it states that the bid, that no evidence that the members of Chatsworth Bid Board of Directors or Advisory Board committed malice or intentionally attempting to defraud the stakeholders of the bid. Some business practices and transactions engaged in may not have been in the best interest of the bid. So they have a number of recommendations here that a bid should be evaluated, that the bid should evaluate and improve its current operational practices. The bid should make itself a distinct entity apart from the Chamber of Commerce, which seems to be part of the problem. And the council office should appoint members of the advisory board, which we will do. These persons should not be members of the bid board. We've had a great number of opposition to this particular renewal. We've had over a hundred signatures on a petition. We've had calls, and a lot of questions have been raised about the practices. And frankly, while I'm very supportive of the Chatsworth Chamber, and I'm very supportive of the bid process, I think there are some things that need to be raised here and need to be looked at. One of the things that concerned me a great deal was that the board chamber, the Chamber of Commerce in Chatsworth, has charged the bid a thousand dollars a month rental for the use of the chamber office, which is the Chatsworth Station, which is owned by the city of Los Angeles, which we graciously allow the chamber to operate at no cost. So the real questions are whether this should have been allowed, and is there too close a relationship between the chamber and the bid? I think there are a number of questions that need to be determined before we proceed with this. So what I'm asking is, I'm going to ask, and I'm going to move the city clerk, well, you have some, before I make the motion, would you like to give us your comments on this, please, Mr. Carey?
Very briefly, the councilman has described the basic findings of our report, which really can be categorized as very weak accounting and business practices. I've discussed this with the council member. I believe it is his intent to restart this process, re-survey the businesses to determine if there really is a will to move forward with a business improvement district. We will sit down with the folks that are involved in this process, and if we do move forward, we would put in place many of the recommendations that you see here, assuming we can get a positive vote on it.
I'm going to move that we do, as you suggested. But I am going to state very clearly that I do support a bid in Chatsworth. I just want it to be operated in a manner in which there are no questions about the propriety or how the money is used, and that we get a clear majority of people who are going to pay for it, who are involved in the process. I think that's been part of the problem. So I would so move that we restart the process, we ask the clerk to repoll, and also sponsor meetings with both sides and lay down some conditions under which we will have participation by virtually everybody, either in the advisory capacity or on the board. And that would be my motion, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. We have a motion. Before us, members, let me repeat for the record, this item has had public hearings held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. We have received a couple of speaker cards, but if I don't hear a motion, we will proceed with a vote. Is there a motion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Burnson's motion is approved. Let's send that matter forthwith. Proceed to the next item, please.
Item number thirty-two called special by Council Member Miskowski.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. These next sequence of council files that we're going to be discussing today are all dealing with Los Angeles International Airport, and in particular, dealing with bills in Washington that have been introduced by Congresswoman Walters, Congressman Waters. I just wanted to bring this to the council's attention and the public's attention, that item thirty-two is a request that was coming out of Rules and Elections Committee for supporting the designation of L.A. International Airport as a priority airport for the receipt of federal funds for airport noise compatibility programs. It's important, as we know, as we do any kind of airport planning and looking at other programs in the future, that to do what we need to do, and to do what we need to do even at present, is to deal with some of the impacts in those communities most heavily impacted by the airport and its continuing operations. This bill by the Congresswoman does give us access to, and priority to access to, those funds to help dealing, to help us deal in our neighborhoods and in our communities with those impacts that are felt on many, many levels. Not only noise, but ground transportation and just, and other environmental impacts that are critical. But I think we want to both thank and be appreciative of the Congresswoman for this effort, and I just wanted to call the council's attention to the support and the recommendation from the committee to ask and support this legislation in Washington.
Ms. Galanter.
I also want to join in urging support for supporting this legislation. It's one of the things that may make it possible to do an expansion of the area in which noise mitigation can be undertaken. The airport has, at my instigation years ago, much to my horror, I learned that the city of Los Angeles had never had a noise insulation, residential insulation program. And it took two years to figure out how to get one. But we have had one now for a long time, and the airport has been very successful in managing the entire program. What they've done is to take on not only the airport's share, but the local's share as well. We do obviously have a serious noise problem in not just the city of Los Angeles, but surrounding that airport, east and south as well. And the ability to get some priority for noise funds from the feds will make it possible, I hope, to extend the contours out beyond the current levels to include the houses that just happen to be on the other side of the line, but also have a severe noise problem. And are you going to take, Mr. President, are you going to take each of the three of these separately, or should I make my comments on the other ones at the same time?
Well, it seems like we're taking them separately. Is it desire of the body to take them together? No? We'll keep pushing your button, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Garcetti.
I think we're up to three. I also rise in support of the legislation opposing the committee action. I think this is an example, the committee recommendation, if I'm correct. I think this is an example, we obviously don't want to cede always control to, at the federal level, to our local business, but this is a shared goal, and I think this really institutes not only some opportunities for us, but institutes making sure that we're not the only ones who are working at making sure that we don't exceed that goal as we look at pollution in and around the airport. And as we keep our broad thinking into the next decade, two decades, three decades for our air transportation needs, this helps perhaps constrain and thus liberate our thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none.
President?
Mr. White.
Are we doing thirty-two and then thirty-four later? Or are we doing both together?
We have item thirty-two before us.
Okay, so thirty-four is next, then.
Correct. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, when we, this legislation suggests that they adjust for the nuisance or noise levels by even changing some of the runways, their preferential runway, they might, as they put it, and limiting the type of aircraft which generates certain noise levels at the airport. This kind of discussion took place year after year after year, and I'm surprised the department, the airport's not here to comment on it. They probably should be, because some of the things that are being requested in this legislation is prohibited by the federal government, not because we are preempted. Even though if you were to adopt this resolution, there's no guarantee that it'll be anything more than a discussion back in Washington. Because this is a major airport in the United States of America, and one where we transport a lot of passengers, close to a hundred million. So I would say that we got to be somewhat realistic. If we were asking for monies for the purpose of studying, coming up with a concept and planning, I think that should be included in that legislation, if it has not already, because I've not read the legislation, Mr. President. Just sort of glanced at the motion, maybe you can enlighten me on that.
I shall defer to our next speaker, Ms. Miskowski.
I was asking, maybe someone can enlighten me on that.
Ms. Miskowski is about to respond.
Okay, thank you.
She's going to enlighten you.
The L.A. World Airport did not have any objection to this bill. They did have a difference of opinion on some of the others, which I'd be happy to talk about when we get to them. But this one, as you indicated, those elements that could be considered, they are all sort of a menu, and a group of things that could be considered as we get that priority to help address the issue of noise. There's not a mandate on LAX for any one proposal, just to consider all of these.
Well, then in closing, Mr. President, I would add that there's a plan on the table, even though there's been no environmental impact study, to expand or, as they put it today, modify the airport, LAX, which is going to include using, having, providing for additional aircraft to transport more passengers. That's what we are doing here locally. I think if you want to curb that noise level, or have some controls over it, that you better, we can start here at home, and we'll be told that, once this legislation is approved and sent off to Washington forthwith, they will say that, here's what you're proposing at LAX at this time. And that's going to generate more noise, more traffic, more inconvenience, and some of these you might look at. So, you know, it's kind of double talk, but if it'll make a difference, I'll support the legislation. But I think it's something we can do at home also.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Miskowski, did you wish to be heard again? Ms. Miskowski passes, seeing no other members wishing to be heard. Mr. Clerk? The motion before us? We have a committee report. There is a Rules, Elections, Intergovernmental Relations Committee report recommendation, yes, item number thirty-two. Okay. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the committee report. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number thirty-three called special by Council Member Miskowski.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the next in the sequence, and actually a companion to the first bill, which actually does increase the noise contour level so that those that are right now on the border but still suffering the impacts, and as we all know, anybody who has represented an area near an airport, those know, everyone suffers from it, but those who are officially within an area to get the soundproofing, either homes or businesses, seem much more limited than those who feel the impacts. So this is another bill by Congressman Waters that increases the noise contour standards so that more homes, more businesses, more communities can be incorporated into a program as we get the priority in the partner bill. But it also does ask for some amendments to help the federal, help us seek with the federal government the kind of funding that could and should be available to make sure that we can enforce and deliver a program of soundproofing the businesses and the residential buildings in this community so that there can be compatibility of the airport with both its current standards and any standards that may change in the future. So I am asking for support of this as well, and that is the recommendation from Rules and Election.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, once again, this bill would provide that the community noise level equivalent shall be, CNL, the soundproofing residential buildings in an area near LAX shall be sixty decibels. What we're going to be doing ourselves here at that airport is going to cause, they would exceed sixty decibels based on the expansion that's on the drawing table. And if I were a congressman back in Washington, I'd just laugh at you. Because if you're going to expand the airport, you can put the sound walls up yourself, you got the money to do that. And you can provide for a quieter neighborhood for the folks in the area, because that's what you're planning. Now, in terms of soundproofing the homes, if federal government want to participate in this partnership, and I think that's what they're talking about, you're suggesting that's what the federal government is going to do, since we're preempted by them, that yes, they can soundproof the homes with the expansion that's programmed that's on the drawing board. So if you think you have problems, nah, wait until you begin to expand that airport, so-called modified, which is expansion, which is the same thing, and that is double talk, and provide for more traffic and planes at the airport that's going to generate a higher level of decibels than what's there now, which is sixty-five. You can't reduce it to sixty. When I support some legislation, I like to support something I think is realistic and that we can accomplish it, and it's more than lip service. And that's what we're talking about here. Because I'm not, this legislation is not lip service. Ms. Waters is sincere about what she's doing. But what I'm saying here locally, we can do more, and the burden is on our shoulders.
Ms. Galanter.
I think this is a case where we ought to take the money and run. And it's the feds who tell us how many airplanes we have to tolerate. It's the feds who tell us where we have to tolerate them, and they can pay their share.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. We have item thirty-three before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, chair recognizes Mr. Labange for an introduction of our special guest today.
Mr. President, members of council, some of you had a chance to walk around, a great member of government for our state of California who's here. But Senator Tom Torexson is visiting. He's from Contra Costa County. He is visiting our chambers today, and he also chairs local government committee for the state. And we also want to thank the state for their recent approval of the budget and what it's done for all Californians. Senator, say a few brief remarks, if you could. Please welcome Senator Tom Torexson.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Mr. President. Indeed, it's an honor and pleasure to be here, and I've come down to seek answers on how to pass a budget more quickly next time. Now, I come here to say I really respect the work you do. Having served in local government myself, three years on a city council in Contra Costa County, and sixteen years on the Board of Supervisors, I know what it feels like when the state takes money away and lays a lot of burdens on you, that you're already overburdened as it is trying to meet the challenges of your neighborhoods and communities. So I want to say that as chair of the local government committee, I invite this council's input, your ideas. We're very open to having hearings here on issues that are of concern to you, and to looking at the fairness and equity of how we balance the budget, and we don't want to do it, in my opinion, and I will continue to fight not to do it on the backs of local government. You're already struggling hard enough to make ends meet and staff all the good purposes that you're currently debating and having your own city budget without the state taking money away. So I'm just here to say commendations on the good work you're doing, and the doors open, the phones open. Anytime I can be of assistance, let me know. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for your visit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. If you want to go over here, I'll leave you some more.
And we're going to be calling. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number thirty-four called special by Council Member Burnson.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, item thirty-four. Members of the council, in all due respect to Representative Waters, who I, who is a friend and I have a good relationship with, and I thoroughly support the first two measures, thirty-two and thirty-three. I do have a problem with item thirty-four. And that problem is that it usurps local authority. This city council has taken a position, capping the airport at seventy-eight million passengers per year. Southern California Association of Governments has capped it at seventy-eight million in respect to our regional transportation plan, which basically governs all of the transportation issues within the region, the six-county region. And while I appreciate the spirit of what this is offered by Representative Waters, I think that we should take a step backward on this one and thank her for her continued support, but remind her that this is a matter of local jurisdiction. And I would ask if our CLA would come to the microphone and perhaps give us a couple words on this, and hold my time while he is, please.
I couldn't have said it better, Mr. Burnson. I think that the issue is clearly one of local control. I don't know exactly there, if the number had been in the bill seventy-six million, or eighty million, or fifty million, we would be no more likely to support it or oppose it. The fact of the matter is, is this is an environmental process, it's a local issue. This is the one airport out of all the airports in the United States that is federal legislation that talk about this. No process involved in that. This is a bill that, on any subject comparable, we would take an opposed position. Our strong recommendation is to oppose the bill, not on the merits of the seventy-eight million, not on the merits of airport, but just on the merits of that it's a local control issue.
Strictly on that basis, right.
Precisely.
I would add that we ought to send her a letter and tell her that we appreciate the encouragement. the encouragement of, and we, and we, and we intend to live with the seventy-eight million cap, as does SCAG, but this is a case of local jurisdiction, and as much as we appreciate her help, we think this is one that we should oppose, on that basis only. And, uh, I would, I would so move.
Very fine.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is one where I, as a member of Rules and Elections Committee, disagreed with the committee, which did come for a recommendation of opposition. And I think in this instance, there's a reason to support the bill in, in Washington. We are going through a master plan discussion at LAX. We've been going through it for nearly a decade. But one of the things in terms of keeping faith with the community is literally, how do we know we can trust you? How do we know you won't change your mind? Where is there reliability, verifiability? As Mr. Burnson indicated, seventy-eight million is now what our regional government authority, SCAG, has said should be the number at LAX. So we, on one hand, espouse regionalization, know full well that our airport issues in this region will not be solved on the backs of the citizens of Los Angeles, cannot be solved on the backs of the citizens of Los Angeles, and has got to have a regional buy-in. That's why that SCAG verification of that number, and that SCAG settling of that number is so critical. But I think that this adds an extra dimension. It adds an extra dimension to that reinforcement of regionalization. It acts as a verification of a buy-in from the federal government. It's interesting, the local control argument, which is used against this, is part of the reason we are in the dilemma we are in. Because what we recently saw, where everyone had been looking to Orange County to take its share, to regionally distribute this, to look at El Toro, which has been long put forward as a very viable alternative in our Southern California regional airport structure, it was the local control in that community that has sent a very strong message, saying, no, you can't come here. It's that same local control inhibition, which I think is going to be a factor in not allowing us to solve our regional problem in a very straightforward, strong regional message. So I do support this, and I'm going to make a substitute motion to, uh, ask the council to register support for this bill in Washington, and ask for my colleagues to support that effort.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. First, let me second the motion. I, I, you know, with all due respect, guys, that's my favorite phrase in the whole English language, by the way. Um, the, the fact is, we don't have any control over these caps. We have a cap now on the airport of forty million annual passengers, and we passed forty million annual passengers probably fifteen years ago, at least. It was supposed to be forty million by the year two thousand. And the reason that we just happily passed that is that the feds have said to us, you cannot limit, you cannot prevent an airplane that wants to land there from landing there unless we say so. I remember sitting here when Tom Bradley was still the mayor, and, uh, and the Irish Airline came in to celebrate that we were adding a new airline, they were adding service to LAX, and I asked, how can they do this? We're over forty million. And they said, because we're an open airport, the feds said so. So I think that the appropriate response here, I'm all for local control, I think we should be able to cap it. We should have been able to cap it at forty if we thought that was the right number. That's before my time, I didn't do that one. The, uh, and if we had capped it at forty and we'd been able to do that, we would have other airports by this time, we would have a thriving regional system. But the problem we have is that the feds, uh, the airlines can buy more congressmen than we can, and they do it on a regular basis. And when we finally have somebody willing to try to help us, seems to me we ought to thank her for it and help her try to help us, instead of saying, thanks, but no thanks. And I, I support the principle of local control, I think that you're right on that score, I just think you're wrong about how this bill affects local control. So I would urge support for the substitute motion. Let's not get wimpy about this.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to note something for all of you, uh, as you follow this debate this morning. Look at the committee that passed this out. Mr. Ridley Thomas and Mr. Padilla were in the majority on the committee report, friend Ms. Miskowski was in the minority in that report, but Mr. Ridley Thomas is not able to be here today, Mr. Padilla is chairing the meeting. Let me tell you something, it's in the committee report. Mr. Padilla and Mr. Ridley Thomas both indicated at the committee meeting their support for the goal of the Waters legislation, their support for the goal of seventy-eight million passengers. Um, and, and there may be some in this room who disagree with that, but, but it's worth noting that the report before us was placed before us by people who support having a cap on passengers. They just agree with what Mr. Deaton has told you about the process and the precedent that this would set. And, and you said, Mr. Deaton, can you just confirm, this would be the only airport in the country that had been carved out in this way by Congress? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Why would we want that? Why would, why would we want the Congress of the United States to point to our airport and legislate against and regarding our airport, Mr. Deaton?
I was just going to point out, with all due respect, that if this bill...
That's my, that's your favorite expression, we know.
I use that from time to time as well. If, with all, with all due respect, if this bill had indicated that this, the air traffic in Southern California for the next twenty years was going to be Y, and that the United States Congress wanted to direct the Department of Navy to provide for El Toro for forty million passengers, and divide that up in, and, and in fact, if you're not going to, if you're going to deal with local control, deal with the entire problem, not deal with just our portion of the problem, then I would, then I might have a different view. But this isn't, that I don't have a different view, because it only deals with one airport, and, uh, it doesn't deal with the issue in El Toro, it doesn't deal with the issue in Burbank, and it doesn't deal with the deal, the issue in Long Beach, and, uh, et cetera. And this isn't, uh, and the fact of the matter is, are we going to be in violation of federal law when we go, what's the penalty? I, I, it's, it's a, um, uh, it's an intrusion without investment. If, if the federal government wants to deal with this, they own the land at El Toro, they can do what they need to do in order to resolve the air, the air problem, the air traffic problem in Southern California as a whole. Don't pick on just, and I would oppose this, I would recommend opposing in this if it was Palmdale, or if it was Burbank, or if it was, uh, Van Nuys for that matter, and or Ontario. But it's intrusion without investment.
I, I, I appreciate that a great deal, Mr. Deaton, and I hope that we are able to step back from, uh, the emotions that sometime come into play when we debate this issue, and, and follow the recommendations of the CLA, and follow the recommendations of the committee, which I have to emphasize, this was a committee that indicated its support for the goals of the Waters legislation. So if you vote for this committee report, you are not voting in favor of LAX expansion, you're voting in favor of the very reasonable principles that Mr. Deaton has outlined. Mr. Deaton, did you want to make another statement?
Just one last comment.
You can have as much of my time as you like, Mr. Deaton.
My wife and I both voted, both live in Orange County, and we both voted against the quote-unquote "park."
How do you know how she voted, Mr. Deaton?
Because she was lobbying everybody in the neighborhood to vote no as well.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I think I spoke a little early, so I'd like to insert my speech from two items ago into this. Um, I, I do rise, um, in support of the Waters legislation, and I understand, uh, the reasonableness that's been raised here by Mr. Weiss and by our chief legislative analyst. I do think, though, it's like a campaign promise. Sometimes when we're out there, or even today as we serve, when we make promises, we know it's a way to kind of kick us all and make sure that our staff and our city actually lives up to that. The moment that we put on those handcuffs, sometimes accountability comes about. So this is one case in which I would suspend the usual, um, um, principle of not wanting those handcuffs, to actually impose those upon us, because I think what that does is it does something that is not just emotional, though importantly emotional for the people that live around LAX, giving relief and guaranteed relief, um, past a certain level to those folks. But it also gets us, as I mentioned at close of the last time I spoke on this, two items ago, I think by constraining our, our options, it actually liberates our thinking about what we're going to be doing. If we look at other cities, if we think about what they've done with regionalization, we have this kind of half-baked approach to regionalization right now that doesn't have anything ambitious. If we truly want to plan for economic development in this region, we have to start putting on the table, um, something like other cities have done, that really allows us to look at something that I don't think LAX will ever be able to be twenty, thirty, forty years down the line. Um, and that's why I'm in favor of this, and urge fellow councilmembers to support that, uh, substitute motion.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, uh, I, I know the congresswoman is well-intentioned, and I will support, uh, the substitute motion under one condition. I would propose an amendment that we support it under the, if the, an amendment is made to the legislation which would require other counties within the SCAG region to step up to the plate and take care of their fair share of the burden. That's, uh, a very important issue, because you've already touched upon the, uh, the Orange County situation. Uh, that's not over, by the way. El Toro is not over, and we're still working on that. But let me just say this, uh, one of the things that's happening, just being initiated by SCAG, is a, is an aviation task force, which will consist, we have, I think, two members of our council, Ms. Miskowski and, and Galanter are, have been appointed to that task force, and, uh, it's composed of members of, involved with aviation airports throughout the region. And one of the things that we are going to do, it's going to be my first challenge to them, uh, is to, for each county, to come up with a number of aviation flights they have each year, and to show, come up with a plan to take care of those. And hopefully that'll be done. If not, uh, the aviation task force will do it for them. And, uh, we hope to become the aviation, uh, administration or, uh, regional airport authority for, uh, for the region, and we can deal with some of these problems, but it's imperative if we are going to put caps on our own situation, which by the way, we have no way to enforce, even with the federal authority, I don't know how you're going to stop people from coming to the airport. The only way you're going to do this is if everybody takes their fair share, and that includes Orange County. And we're going to include every airport and every possible, uh, type of aviation use within the six-county region will be a topic for the aviation task force. So I would urge that, uh, I, I will go along with that, I think, uh, Congresswoman Waters means well, but I think that the, it should be amended to include a requirement that the other members of our region take care of their responsibility so it doesn't all wind up at LAX, and I would so move.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, certainly, I think this is difficult, because, um, many of us actually do support, uh, the seventy-eight million cap, but, um, and clearly, while I, I was happy to support the other two items where, uh, we're getting money from the federal government to help us address the issue right now, that the current expansion of this airport has caused, uh, to the residents, particularly in and around LAX. What I have a problem with this particular legislation, this does not cap our airport at seventy-eight million. This legislation says that if passed, this would prohibit the Secretary of Transportation from approving revisions or modifications of our airport if the revisions could result in the number of passengers exceeding seventy-eight million. That's what I have a problem with. I think this is, this is flawed language. Who's, I mean, if, if they were to come back and say, well, this modernization, this revision, uh, whatever plan we, we're going to put forth in our master plan could result in more than seventy-eight million, then the Secretary of Transportation is prohibited from approving that plan. Uh, I think that's what I have a problem with, uh, because, uh, who's to say who would ultimately decide whether, uh, the revision, uh, the modernization, the security, uh, aspects that are put in could, might exceed, what if it's seventy-eight million plus a hundred? What if it's seventy-eight million plus, you know, a thousand? Uh, and that's what I have a problem with. It doesn't cap it at seventy-eight million. It's not, it's not the federal government giving us any weight, um, to, to really limiting the number of passengers at LAX. I think that's something, um, we need to work on. I think SCAG has, has come up to the plate to help us on that. Uh, I think it really is more about us in the city, um, and, and believing that the, taking the merit as word, that he does, he does not want it to exceed seventy-eight million at the airport, and again, getting a regional solution to the air traffic in this region. This legislation does not do that. Uh, this has a very flawed sentence in there, uh, that our plan would not be approved, could not be approved, if the plan could result in more than seventy-eight million passengers coming, uh, to LAX. That's why I don't like this. I think it's flawed language, and I don't think it caps our airport at seventy-eight million, and, uh, it's, it's not as much about local control as, this doesn't do that. Um, this really sets up a very arbitrary, uh, judgment on whether or not our plan could be approved in the future, and that's why I don't like this, and I'm, I, I don't think I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I just want to take note of the fact that although these three bills deal with airport policy, they were not referred to the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee, and so this is my first real, uh, attempt to comprehend them and explain what I think are the issues here. Um, the, I, I did want to, with respect to the regional issue, remind anyone who may not be aware of it, that, uh, before the airport was in Congresswoman Waters' district, when it was in Ms. Harmon's district, she created, and Ms. Waters participates in a regional grouping of congressional representatives who have met several times with the Secretary of Transportation and the head of the FAA, in an effort to try to address exactly the problem that Mr. Deaton raised and Mr. Burnson raised. Um, we have had, uh, Orange County council members, uh, congress members on both sides of the, the El Toro issue participate in this. But they have all agreed that there is a need for a regional, a regional solution to this. The problem we have before us today is that if we, if we show any signs, we've had a change of administration in the city, we've had a change of administration at the federal level, and we've had changes in committee assignments at the federal level. If we start to step away from, um, the position that the city has taken over the years, I think that we're, we're opening the door for the airlines and others to come back and say, well, you know, we've decided that LAX is the center of the universe, and that's where we're going to fly, and so Congress, make the, make the locals, let, let us come in there, which is what they have historically done. So I think that it's important to remember that there are a number of people in Congress working on it. I do support Mr. Burnson's later suggestion that we ask Ms. Waters to carry additional, to amend this, and certainly, Mr. Deaton, I feel sure if you asked her, if you even wrote the bill for her on the, on the regional one, I feel sure she would take that, along with some of these other twenty-eight or so people who were in that, those meetings, and attempt to do exactly what we all feel needs to be done.
Right. The difficulty is that if there, we can talk about a regional solution, all we want, if there ain't no airport in Orange County, there ain't no regional...
Hey, you're preaching to the converted. I agree with you.
I understand, I understand, but there ain't no regional solution.
Well, as I think I told you a number of months ago, my, my idea for how to get Orange County to agree to put an airport there the quickest was to threaten to do it for them. That if, if LA said, we're willing to say, we'll go in and run the airport, just give it to us, we'll take care of it, that Orange County would leap at the chance to take it away from us. And I still think we ought to try it. And if they don't leap at the chance to take it, so take it away from us, we ought to run an airport there. We run Ontario just fine. We could run one there as well.
Yes. Mr. Holden.
Uh, Mr. President, members, I just said, when you took up item number thirty-three, that basically it was being very kind, but now I'd be more precise, there was just a bunch of double talk. Because, you know, how are you going to ask the federal government to control the decibel on the noise level, on one hand, and then you've got a plan on the table where you're asking, where the Department of Transportation is saying, don't expand the airport to a level whereby you're going to increase the passage level of seventy-eight million per year, or something like that? Uh, yeah, seventy-eight million per year, you said, uh, she was saying, keep a cap, and you're saying, no, don't keep a cap. You're saying, keep a cap, and you're saying, no, don't keep a cap, and we're going to, we might have a hundred million passengers per year, but, but you, you federal government, you maintain the noise. maintain the noise level. I mean, I've never heard anything like this in my life. You can't have it both ways. The fact of the matter is that you've got to be friendly with the neighbors, and the plan may not be friendly with the neighbors in the area, or the people that Ms. Sikowski represent, or the people that Mr. Thomas represent, or the people that Ms. Galanter represents. Okay? So, come on. You can't be that -- we can't be -- we can't be that dense. We think that we cannot say to the federal government, "Cap this at 78 million," and then, on the other hand, say, "You've got to reduce the noise level, but let us go to 100 million passengers per year, let us expand the airport without limits." Come on. They're going to make fun of you. Ha, ha, ha. I'm going to laugh in advance. And I'm going to support Ms. Sikowski's motion. It's making a statement to the community, it's making a statement to the federal government that we are sincere, genuinely sincere, about capping the growth and development at LAX and reducing the noise level to 60 decibels. If you really are interested in doing that, then this is a giveaway. If you're not, then I don't know what you're talking about at all. We shouldn't even show up on this issue today. It should not even be before us. Yes, we should support the legislation, not oppose it. It's really hypocritical, beyond double talk.
Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I think Ms. Galanter is there. And the reason I support Mr. Burnson's motion is because I think it's inherent in Congresswoman Waters' bill that if we cap LAX at 78 million with the federal government's concurrence, that there has to be then a regional solution. There has to be a fair share, there has to be an allocation. And this is one where we can't do it alone. I think everyone acknowledges that, and so this one is not where local control is necessarily supreme. We all know that the solution's going to come from a regional buy-in, from a regional effort. On the one hand, Mr. Deaton indicates that local control is an important element and is the reason why we should oppose this bill, but on the other, you say that in looking for a regional solution, perhaps the federal government should step in, it owns El Toro, and do something. So we have this almost schizophrenic view of the world in terms of how to solve it, except that there's one fundamental. It can't be LA alone, and I think the recognition of the Waters' bill moves that forward in a straightforward manner and gives us the recognition in Washington, particularly as amended explicitly by Mr. Burnson, that the regional buy-in has got to be a solution. There can be, and there need to be, other strong structures, whether or not it's a SCAG task force, whether or not it's a revival and a reconfiguration of the Southern California Regional Airport Authority, which might have the ability to come in with consensus to do something on a regional basis. It is an appropriate thing to move forward at this point. It's not double talk, because even a 78 million cap, that acknowledges a growth and an expansion at LAX. So that is going to be airport noise is going to increase, and we need the help from the federal government to help deal with the neighborhoods. And speaking of the neighborhoods, I would like the council's indulgence to move a three-minute public hearing. We do have someone from the Westchester community who came down, who's been very involved, one of the neighborhoods most affected by LAX currently. So with the concurrence of the President, I would like to move a three-minute public hearing.
Is there any objection to the three-minute public hearing being requested? Say none. The council calls forward Carol Hassan.
I'm Carol Hassan, Westchester resident, and I want to thank Councilwoman Sikowski for, you know, making the effort to let me speak. And I just want to present a resident's point of view very quickly. There's two opposite poles, one, "I want to believe," and the other, "Trust no one." I want to believe that the mayor and the city of Los Angeles are truly dedicated to the regional approach to airport traffic. And I do believe that the city of Los Angeles is opposing the 78 MAP because it has given its word that the growth of Los Angeles International Airport will be limited to 78 MAP. Many, you know, you've already openly said there's really no realistic way of stopping it there. Parenthetically, I hope Ms. Waters' bill is successful in passing Congress and getting signed into law, but who knows how long that will take and whether it gets amended in one way or another. We just don't know what will happen. Now, why do I have doubts about the city of Los Angeles' commitment to the regional approach to air traffic? First, the fate of the Southern California Regional Airport Authority, SCRA. Its bylaw said the city of LA has to have a representative present on its board for the board to make important decisions. The city of LA's position on SCRA has been vacant, I believe, since last November. I wrote to the mayor asking why. After 90 days, with the help of one of his staff, I got this reply. While we are still considering the appointment to the Southern California Regional Airport Authority, we are working hard to use airports in our own jurisdiction to address the growing aviation demand in our region. Now, that is months later. One of the counties participating in SCRA, Riverside, I believe, pulled out. Now, I think, as you indicated, SCAG has taken over the lead. I don't understand why the city did not participate in SCRA. Another example, Mayor Hahn was supported by Westchester voters because he signed a pledge not to expand LAX. Here's a quote from Mayor Hahn in a recent LA Times article. "A pledge is a pledge. People break pledges all the time." Now, I really want to believe he was misquoted about that. Lastly, our community of Westchester keeps hearing about how the mayor is reaching out to stakeholders. We've also read that certain parts of the new plan are non-negotiable.
May I ask you to conclude, please?
Yes. I want to believe you. Please give me a reason.
Thank you.
Point of clarification.
Mr. Burnson, before you speak, Ms. Sikowski still has the floor.
Thank you. I will conclude.
Okay. And Mr. Holden is waiting to be heard as well. Mr. Burnson?
My mic on? Yeah, it is now. SCRA basically is history. They've been in existence for many, many years, have done nothing to solve the problem. We've taken a hands-on approach with SCAG, and we intend to be the regional rail authority and to try to get the legislation and other requirements that are necessary to realistically solve the region's problem, which needs to be solved expecting 55 million additional passengers per year on a regional basis. And unless we are able to do that and everybody takes their share, then LAX will be impacted, and nothing can stop the people from coming there. So this is very important. We need local jurisdiction, yes, but if Representative Waters really wants to help us, she should author legislation that will require that the entire region take their fair share of the burden.
Mr. Holden?
I agree, Mr. Burnson. That's a reasonable request, and I'm sure she will consider it an amendment. But let me say that Ms. Waters represents that area, and she's responding to her constituents. Some people do when they're elected, respond to their constituents in need, and some people don't. I say to you that I liked that article that was written earlier on, quote from the mayor. Ms. Hahn, for example, lived in Westchester, and I remember when you lived there. And if you were still in Westchester, you might feel the way that people feel about the noise level in Westchester now. But when you live in San Pedro, no, Pedro, Pedro, way away, just all you do is use our airport, then it's a little different. The fact of the matter is that we do live in the area, we do represent the area, and I've got to tell you that that noise level keeps you up late at night and wakes you up early in the morning. And for those of you who don't live in the area but use the airport, you should give some consideration to those elected officials who do represent the area that have talked too long and still live there. So at least from my point of view, I think that we should support the legislation, and I hope we can have a majority vote to do the eight votes at least.
Ms. Hahn?
Councilman Holden, that was uncalled for. You know for a fact that we have been very supportive, really as a council, for the community of Westchester on several issues that they've come down and asked us to work with them, whether it would be the widening of Sepulveda or any other -- many of us have fought for a long time to make sure that the problems that the airport has caused in and around Westchester are solved now. We feel like the traffic problems are horrendous now. Many of us have lobbied to have the green line extended into the airport. I mean, there's a lot of things we're trying to do to address these issues now. I am supportive of a cap of 78 million at this airport. I'm more supportive, Councilman Burnson, that we do have legislation that really forces the region to share in the burdens and benefits of air traffic so that we don't solve these problems on the back of the residents of Westchester and Los Angeles. I don't think this bill does that. This bill does not cap 78 million passengers at our airport. I think there's other ways we can do this. This is flawed language and does not do that, which is why I'm not supporting it.
Mr. Labance?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the council. After the great Andy Reid last night led the Eagles over the -- over the -- who were they playing last night? This is flashing me on real quick there. I know it's terrible. I know, the Redskins, terrible. Excuse me, I apologize. Wait a second there, Hal, it's important. I flipped Channel 35, and I saw Pat Russell and Cliff Moore talking about LAX. Did anybody see that last night at all on Channel 35? Talked about the whole history here. Then I'm looking at the board right here, and I'm saying it's 2002, and I go back 40 years from now. What was 40 years from now? 1962, when Lyndon Johnson, or 63, dedicated the theme building at the LAX. How many people were going through LAX at the time? And I want to throw out 40 years from now. How many people will be going through Los Angeles International Airport, and what effect this would have on the future or our ability to the future? I do like the SCAG approach, as Councilman Burnson spoke so eloquently, as he always does, from the history factor of having a regional approach, which is so important. But I think it's kind of poor for us to say that we would support something that one airport in this great country is focused on as far as a cap. So if I could ask Mr. Deaton to give me a little help there, and I apologize, Coach Reid, for missing that.
Well, Mr. Labance, talking about Cliff Moore, I just thought of about 20 years ago, this council took an action to support -- to sponsor legislation in Sacramento for a regional airport authority, which would have the power to cite and have the authority through a joint powers or through state legislation to put airports in various parts of the Southern California area. And Cliff Moore and I went to Sacramento to lobby for that bill, and the -- at that point, there was a very powerful Orange County senator, and she indicated that it had to go through her committee, and it never was scheduled.
So, anyway, I know it's difficult. We have to look long-term, though, as someone behind us, someone who sat in our seats before, look to where we got to today. And to stop anything, to stop movement, stop people, we have to look at new ways to move it. And also, we have to look at the industry of how they're going to be moving people and what kind of aircraft, and to make sure it's safe for everybody. I just wanted to let my little piece be known to look out future, look out far, and don't handcuff us. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
I'd like to move the previous question, and I didn't watch it last night because I can't afford Adelphia cable. Mr. Garcetti is the final speaker. Mr. Garcetti, they may have a lifeline program at Adelphia. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard, Mr. Clerk, I believe, are ready for a vote. We have the committee report before us. Are there any other motions?
Actually, you have a substitute motion before you that has been amended. It has been accepted by the mover on the motion.
As a friendly amendment, so we have -- would you repeat the motion for everyone?
The substitute motion is to register support in Washington, and the amendment is required that all other counties in SCAG region adopt their fair share in the burden.
That's support if amended.
For clarification, support the legislation if amended.
I'm sorry, I actually -- I'm a purist on this issue. I just want to understand exactly what the amendment does.
It asks Ms. Waters to include in her legislation a requirement that the other counties in the SCAG region take their share of the burden and implement the provisions to make sure that they're able to take care of it.
Well, I --
So that's what's before us.
If Mr. Deaton wants to comment on that, I would like to hear. Yeah, but it wasn't clear to me that was the amendment that we heard earlier. I just want to make --
Mr. White, but do you understand the amendment?
Not quite. I really don't.
Okay. Mr. Deaton, final comment?
Just that the motion would be that the city would support the legislation if amended by including a requirement that their regional -- well, if that's not the motion, then...
Ms. Galanter?
It's just a request?
Cindy's -- correct me if I'm wrong. Cindy's motion, substitute motion, was to support the bill, and the amendment which she accepted was to ask Ms. Waters to amend the bill. So it was to -- it wasn't support if, it was support and.
Then...
So that's an important distinction, support if amended versus support and seek amendment. Ms. Sikowski is the maker of the motion, which is...
As the maker of the original motion, I agreed with Mr. Burnson's request. I agree with Ms. Galanter's interpretation of it, because, as I said, I think clearly if there's a 78 million cap that becomes enforceable at LAX, the other is automatic, the other is understood. There has to then be a regional network explanation. So I think that it makes sense to support the bill and seek the amendment to clarify and expand what the 78 million cap at LAX will mean.
Okay, so that's a motion to support the legislation and seek an amendment. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, five noes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, I understand you wish to take item number 84 out of order. Yes, Members, without objection, let's take item 84 out of order. We do have representatives of the Department of Water and Power here on this item, and they do have a 1:00 commission meeting to attend. So as they come forward, Mr. Clerk, would you please read item 84? Just one moment. Item 84 is a communication from the Department of Water and Power relative to amendments to all five 1996, 2000 local 18 bargaining unit memorandum of understanding, as amended to result in the 2002-2005 MOU. And the recommendation is to approve the five amendments. Public hearing having not been held requires to hold a public hearing here. I am not in receipts of any speaker cards. For members of the public wishing to address the council on this item, we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Are there members wishing to ask any questions or make any comments? Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, Members, I would say that I want a card-carrying member of the IUE, so I understand -- well, they just changed the name. The fact of the matter is that it's a good package that Mr. Brian D'Assi negotiated. That's fine. The thing that troubles me is that whereas you have $500 million net, you still talk about the possibility of passing on these salary increases to the ratepayers. And I've got some problem with that. That's what it says in the paper, anyway. I can't believe anything you read in the paper. I'm the first one to tell you that. But that's why I call this special, so that you can respond to some of those concerns that I have. But we realize, according to the mayor's office, that this will not come from general fund, number one. We want to make sure that the 5% that we receive from DWP annually is still -- will not be interrupted. I want that question answered. We also want to know that the ratepayers will not be hit, because you have other capital projects out there that are under construction right now. And I want to know why. Another question is that we have the -- this debt is called for these -- some of these power plants, the deferred debt. Why aren't we paying that down? Why are we paying that down? It's called, the correct terminology for it, I don't recall at this time, but they're outstanding debts, okay? Why are we paying that down at a greater rate?
Okay. Mr. Holden, David Wiggs is a general manager of the Department of Water and Power. Let me start first by assuring you, we have budgeted these proposed increases under the agreement we negotiated with IBW. Certainly, these will not necessitate any rate increase.
It's called stranded debt.
Yeah, stranded cost, well, and I'll get to that, yes, sir. This does not, this agreement does not, certainly in itself, require any kind of rate adjustments going forward. With our current rates, which we are very committed to try to hold for the next several years, we will be able to cover these increases plus continue our 7% actually transfer on the power side, 5% on the water side, city transfer to the city. So there will be no impact whatsoever on our rates in the foreseeable future, certainly not for this, unless there's something unforeseen that I can't tell you today about. But we have budgeted this, we can afford this, we think it's a fair package. We have to compete for these workers, not only in California but across western United States. So we need some, this contract allows us to retain and attract very important people to our operations. And we will be able to maintain our city transfer. The debt you're talking about is there is debt on generation.
Right.
That was up at a $4 billion level a few years ago. It's now down to about $1 billion. We will continue to reduce that debt as part of our ongoing budgeting process. We'll be out of generation debt within the next three or four years, depending on our total revenues. It's important to continue to reduce that debt, because from the rating agency perspective and our Wall Street presentations, less debt is good, is better. In fact, because of this city council, really, and their leadership and the mayor, we were just solving key, important issues for the department like gas and the contract, we were able to get a bond rating increase. Our rating has been increased this last month, which saves our customers $800 a year. So we are right on target where I think you would like us to be.
I think the ratepayers are asking the question, when will they see a savings based on the investment they made by causing this debt for generating additional power? You know, stranded debt, allowing you to generate a stranded debt, which was used to generate more power. And during the crisis, when we were selling it off, the ratepayers were not benefiting from that. Other ratepayers in the state of California, which we were compelled to sell to using our power lines and also our energy, lower energy costs, to them, and the ratepayers here didn't benefit from that at all. So at what point, when the ratepayers here begin to benefit and realize the savings based on their investment of these new power generating plants, some of them you've sold, by the way?
I would suggest to you, councilmember, that they are benefiting significantly right now. Our rates are 40 to 100% less than our neighboring utilities, because we did retain our jurisdiction and Mr. Deaton and others fought hard to keep us out of and you out of deregulation.
Mr. Deaton and who else?
And this council, you were involved at that point in time also.
Yes.
And I wasn't here, so I'm not taking credit.
You heard about me, didn't you?
But we do want that recognized, that we are, our customers are seeing a tremendous benefit right now, and we are fighting to maintain that benefit. And with even rates that are that low, we were able to continue to pay off our debt and will pay back this stranded cost.
Mr. President, members, in closing, I just wanted to make note of the fact, so when the ratepayers read about this $223 million package in the newspaper, that they will know that the ratepayers will not have to pay additional monies, the rate won't go up because to subsidize this package, that there's sufficient funds available in the DWP general fund to offset this for a number of years to come. I think that's important to note. And at the same time, the stranded debt that we were used to pay to build these power plants, generating plants across the country, that's also been paid down from a $4 billion stranded debt down to $1 billion stranded debt. And you expect to have that paid off sometime in a few years to come, which will then give us the ability to reduce the rates to our ratepayers here in the state of Los Angeles. Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Let's proceed to the next item. Item number 35, called special by Councilmember Miskowski. Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this is something Royals Election Committee had looked at. It was to support unanimously all three members, asking the governor to veto a piece of legislation that had passed, which would have created a single billboard exemption. I think we still should act on it, but this is to give the information to the council that the governor, in fact, did veto the bill, which is the position that the committee recommended. So rather than receiving file, I would just ask we adopt the committee report. The governor has taken the action that the city council committee had recommended.
Mr. Reyes.
Councilmembers, colleagues, I understand it's a moot point. The governor has signed it and it's been vetoed. And I'm not here to fight with anyone. I'm here more to put into perspective what we were trying to achieve and looking at how we address the issue of being creative with economic development strategies and looking at how these areas that, quite frankly, have the majority of industrial zones, have areas of need that are stark, no access to schools, these areas, we are literally moving kids, 16,000 students being bused out of these areas. I'm looking for ways to bring revenues so we can build art schools, educational facilities, programs that can keep our kids in a safe environment. And at times, we have to resort to creative approaches in dealing with leveraging what we can. And in this case, it was a billboard. I want to thank Assemblymember Gil Sadio, because this is a project we had been working on two years ago. We're trying to convert an old historic three-story structure, and the billboard over three or four years would have generated $1 million in revenues that would have allowed us to complete this financial package. It was for a good cause. And now I understand more so in this process that we need to revisit the billboard ordinance. We need to look at how it is that we give local councilmembers, should I say, councilors more local control and working with their neighborhoods, working with communities, so that if a billboard would be adopted using the SUD and/or a variance, that we can go in that direction, knowing that we're trying to address a very vital need. Again, in other parts of the city, you don't have those realities, where in my case, I have up to August, 33 homicides. In the other areas, we have prominent industrial zones, like in CD8, you have 84 homicides. In CD9, you have 64 homicides. In CD14, 35. And in CD15, you have 44 homicides. These are people who are dying. These are young people that are getting shot and killed, and these are folks who don't have a diversion, don't have a means of access. And we have to be more creative with how we use a resource like a billboard, knowing that we need community support, knowing that we have neighborhood organized input, and that we do it in a manner that's tactful. Just one last point. When I look at this report and it says that the planning department of CLA do not want to clutter the corridors along the freeways, yet the city is willing to adopt huge billboards for the Staples Center, so that people who have the ability to pay for expensive events get the accommodation and support of facility like that to address the needs of the more well-to-do. When I look at the giant billboard next to USC announcing events for a very private school, those who cannot afford will not be able to get there. And yet, what we were trying to do, almost finished, to provide access to a school of arts for the impoverished kids living in Pico Union, and that became this big issue. And that, councilmembers, I think we need to think out of the box, and we do need to be more aggressive. And I'll be revisiting this ordinance to see how we can provide stronger local control for councilmembers who are working with their communities to improve the quality of life for their children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. So the members wishing to be heard, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, the motion before us, item number 35. It's a motion by Councilmember Miskowski to support the Royals Elections Intergovernmental Relations Committee report. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 40 calls special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I think we need an explanation on the fact that we asked, discussing drawing new boundaries for council districts and for the Board of Education. I thought we went through that exercise. Maybe somebody can explain to me why we have these articles on the agenda today. Mr. President.
Good morning, members of the council. This is Jessica Hines with the City Attorney's Office. Items 40 and 41 are technical amendments to the redistricting ordinance, which you passed in June. These ordinances were prepared with the assistance of the Bureau of Engineering to provide the technical descriptions of the properties as opposed to simply referring to the tiger line file points. The earlier ordinances didn't make exact reference to geography. Specifically, it referred to map points on the Census Bureau's maps, and these documents give reference to the official Bureau of Engineering landmarks in the city.
Mr. Holden.
Members, I'd like to see these boundaries. I think it's important, just in case the engineering map is a little different from what we voted on, I think it's important for each of us to look at those maps. I mean, if you're going to continue this for a day, that's fine by me. And I want to see that at least my district is compatible with what's before us today. I don't think there's any urgency. You can wait a day, couldn't you?
There's no urgency, however, I can assure you that Bureau of Engineering is here to represent.
Yes, I'd like to see that. I mean, if you can continue it for a day, that'll be fine by me. So because, and the reason why I raised that question, Mr. President, 10 years, oh, about 18 years ago, there were some boundary changes and some councilpersons thought they had certain areas that they were representing. And when the map was finally drawn by the engineering department, they discovered it did not. And they thought it was in their district, but it was in my district, and they were shocked by that, because they had CRA developing a project at that site. And then they said, the CRA said, no, that's not your district, that's Mr. Holden's district, and you need his signature to sign off on it. So I would like to just hold this over for a day, give me the prerogative to take a look at it.
That's a motion to continue this matter for one day.
Just a question of technicality. I know this is Jerry DeRosa, who was our great mapmaker in the meeting tomorrow night in Salento, Hanga. Could it be continued to Friday, since we're back here? Make it easier for Jerry, because he has a family.
Mr. Holden. Okay, motion to continue this matter to this Friday. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, then this matter shall be continued until Friday. Thank you. Mr. President, item number 41 is similar, was called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden, item 41, did you wish to continue this matter as well?
41, which one is the councils? 41 and 42?
It's the LAUSD districts.
41 is.
41 is.
Go ahead, I don't care. I'm just scared by the council.
Item 41 is the city council.
41 is the city council? Okay, then, item 41, we're going to continue it to Friday. Item 40, we can ask for reconsideration and vote on it today, Mr. President.
Okay, item 41, members without objection, shall be continued to Friday.
Point of information, I truly mean this, Jerry is one of the greatest mapmakers and we all benefit from it. He has a schedule, the Friday doesn't allow him to be here, and he's, someone else can come represent him. But if we continue it a week, then he's here, he's done all the maps and et cetera. You hear it a week? Is that a problem if it's a week? If it's a problem for next Tuesday, that's a problem. Continue both items.
Without objection, then, item 41 is continued. One week from today, September 24th. Thank you, Mr. Laban, for your help. Mr. Holden has also moved reconsideration of item 40, so that we can act on that matter today. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 40 now back before us. Members wishing to be heard on item number 40, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item. Item number 43, called special, inasmuch as a member of the public wishes to be heard, it's an item for which public hearing has not been held. Council calls for Mr. Jim McQuiston on item 43.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Ever since I was a wee bearin', I heard about Mother Cabrini, an icon in Los Angeles, and I'm surprised that we don't have already a plaque commemorating her. And I'm thrilled that we're finally moving on the subject and that in an appropriate place, we will have the plaque finally acknowledging her great efforts for this city.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. This closes public comment for item number 43. Are there members wishing to be heard on item 43? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 52T was called special by Councilmember Reyes. I believe there is a motion that has been circulated.
We also have a card on item number 52. Council calls for it at this time, Mr. Mort Allen. Is this for 52T? Item 52 had been called special for a card. Mr. Allen.
52 total. I just want to say this, I'm the one that's out there in the trenches of the valley, and I've now got the Realty Board against me and VICA, and I'm out there fighting for everybody. And this issue came up at a meeting last week, and I just would like to call it out. There was a motion brought last January 15th by one of the councilmen about these fee waivers. And there's no explanation, but just as an example, today, do I have it here? Today, there's $132,220 worth of fee waivers, of which $1,700 are Valley issues and $130,000 are City issues. And I don't understand, we can't get $10 million to buy the golf course in Studio City, how they're, each council meeting, there's over 100,000 in fee waivers. Two of these, 30,000 for the Emmy Awards and 10,000 for the Latin Grammys, these people charge, you want to buy a seat, you're paying $1,000 for a seat. They're making money, and that they're getting fee waivers, and this goes back to the EI, the entertainment thing and all that. And because it's not explained, I just think it's something that should not, should be covered a little bit more carefully of why a lot of these groups are getting fee waivers, and then other people have to pay fees.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. This closes public comment on item 52. Members wishing to be heard on item 52, Mr. Reyes, I know wished to address a matter relative to item 52T. Let's begin with Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I simply want to amend the motion. It was a technical amendment. There were the wrong account numbers in the original motion, so that's why today's amendment has been brought forward. So I would move 52T as amended with the motion that was circulated already to all the councilmembers.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes is on 52BB, which is the next item.
Well, item 52 is before us in its entirety.
Mr. President, Mr. Reyes called it special for my benefit.
Okay. So that amending motion has been distributed. Is there any objection to the amending motion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 52 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Point of clarification, that's 52T and the amendment 52BB, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The next item is item number. The next item is item number sixty-two. There is a card on that matter. I understand Mr. Zine may have a verbal motion.
Council calls forward Mr. Robert Aquino. Is he here? I don't see him, but we will keep his card as part of the file and close the public comment period for item sixty-two. Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, on sixty-two-A, request that we have that heard on September twenty-fourth. Originally, it stated next available closed session agenda and verbal amendment to change that to September twenty-fourth.
Okay, so that's a request to continue this matter to September twenty-fourth, one week from today.
Actually, it's adopting the motion and having the closed session on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so we do need to vote on this item and the hearing date will be the twenty-fourth of September, one week from today. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number sixty-six, called special inasmuch as members of the public wish to be heard, it's an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Council calls forward Mr. Mort Allen on item sixty-six. He passes. That concludes public comment for item sixty-six. Any members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number eighty-two, on the supplemental agenda, is the item noticed for public hearing. There are cards on this matter. Yes, the council calls forward at this time, Mr. David Morgan, followed by Paul Camerata and Dirk DeGrieve.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I want to compliment you on the nice pledge of allegiance and the wonderful prayer we started with today. Adds a great deal to our council meeting. Now, this proposal here for a property-based business improvement district at Sunset and Vine in Hollywood has various defects. I'm from the Hollywood Better Government Association, which has been meeting in Hollywood since nineteen sixty-nine. And it's a serious problem because it's discriminating in favor of the big high-rise buildings against the small property owners and the commercial tenants and the consumers. We have a traditional method of appraisal of property in which the building square footage determines the value of property and the cost of services to that property. This is a system that's used by the tax appraiser for the county and by real estate appraisers in setting the price of real estate sales. Land has a minor impact on that and therefore we use, in traditional sense, the building square footage. Now, what has happened here is that in this proposal by the Central Hollywood Coalition, they have sought to overthrow the historic method of property appraisal and throw in all sorts of other factors to confuse the council and confuse the issue. Now, what has happened here is that this CHC Board of Directors has generated an enormous windfall profit for itself at the expense of the smaller property owners by this system. Now, I have handed out here to the council members, and I hope you've all got them, our sheet with the calculations. I've gone through every property, about a hundred properties in the district, a hundred owners in the district, and calculated where the money came from and where it went for the proposed services. The cost of services is about a million dollars. There's about three-point-eight million square feet. It comes out about twenty-seven-point-two cents per square foot, the cost of services. However, the CHC Board of Directors and some members of CHC and the larger buildings have set up an assessment formula that gives them the services at half price. So they pay fifty percent of the cost of the services for eighteen properties on average.
If I may ask you to conclude, please.
To conclude, yes. The other eighty-four properties are paying two-hundred-and-twenty percent of the cost of the services, four times as much, which is very unfair. And therefore, I ask the council to reject this proposal immediately and either use funds from the police budget, which haven't been spent, or the CRA budget, which has twenty-two million dollars this year, to fund this district, these services, and not impose an assessment district on Hollywood.
Thank you very much. Paul Camerata, followed by Dirk DeGrieve and Scott Halper.
Mr. President, distinguished council, my name is Paul Camerata. I'm the owner of Sunset Sound Recorders in Hollywood. We've been there for forty years now. We have two locations in Hollywood. One is currently in the Hollywood Entertainment District bid, and the other one is located on Sunset Boulevard in the proposed Sunset Vine bid. We feel strongly that this assessment is extremely expensive for the services that will be provided. All I can do is give you my feeling from the Hollywood bid as it stands now of the services that we are provided or not provided. What they are supposed to include is sidewalk cleaning and street sweeping, which we are supposed to receive, but since we are on, not on the main boulevard, we do not receive that. Also, in our area, we're supposed to, we get graffiti control, but we had that before with the Hollywood beautification team. So we're paying for it through the bid when we had it for nothing. And we also get two civilian uniformed guards that patrol a couple times a day in the daylight hours only that we really need at night when the problems occur. I see from the new proposed Sunset Vine bid that the same services are to be provided. And I feel that this will be the same situation with this new bid. There's also the issue in the proposed bid budget that nearly thirty percent of the assessed monies are to go to the administration or running of the bid. This is just too much money that is being spent in that area that should go into the direct services for the property owners. In closing, I'd like to say that this bid, or proposed bid, as it is currently structured, will have little value to Hollywood except for the more expense to the property owners or their tenants. Not to mention that the timing is inappropriate with a possible pending secession of Hollywood where a bid would not be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. DeGrieve.
Good afternoon. My name is Dirk DeGrieve. I am the president of the Central Hollywood Coalition, the Association of Property Owners. I'm here also representing the sixty-four, sixty-four Sunset Building, the full family-owned Sunset Building since nineteen seventy-one, the year they built the building. Well, here we are. We're at fifty, we're over fifty percent in support, and support is growing daily. I'm happy to report that. And the formation of the bid is a very important aspect of the revitalization of Hollywood. We need to continue what we have started. And the property owners in support of this business improvement district are very, very supportive of this revitalization effort. And finally, we are looking forward to start this bid and continue with a clean and safe neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott Halper.
Mr. President, members of the council, if this tax assessment is approved, the property owners who are not notified of board elections would have to pay over two-hundred percent of the cost. These property owners were not allowed to attend the directors' meetings, vote on bylaws, the tax rates, or even who they want to be a director. This forces the property owners shut out of the formation process to raise their rents. This forces the working-class business owners to raise their retail prices, passing this on to the working-class consumers. As detailed by others providing testimony and documents, there is ample alternate funding through the city and CRA to fund this program. I confer with the Hollywood Better Government Association, Ocean Way Recording, Sound Factory, and Sunset Sound, and respectfully request that Councilman Garcetti withdraw the item eighty-two motion.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number eighty-two. Are the members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know we had testimony about this before, and I want to thank the folks that came out here. I know it's been a long meeting to wade through it. Very much appreciate your contributions today. This is democracy at its best, at its worst sometimes. Sometimes democracy cuts for us, sometimes it cuts against us. This is something which we have a desire of property owners that is there. I have, as we've talked about with Mr. Morgan before, shared some ambivalence about business improvement districts and want to make sure that when they are there, that we don't use them ever as an excuse, as the last speaker just mentioned, to not do what we're supposed to. So it's not a matter of there being other city money available for this. The city is and should already be doing this. We've bulky item pickups in Hollywood, which now go and actually clean up the streets proactively, which we got to this budget this year. Expanding Hollywood to get a footbeat that will go on Sunset and Hollywood and Santa Monica. These are the things we're fighting for, fighting successfully for, and I don't see the bids ever as an excuse for the city not to do what its first and foremost duties are. The mayor just announced, I think it was today or yesterday, the twenty-four-hour turnaround time on graffiti throughout the city. If these things are enough that business owners don't need a business improvement district, then you don't get the vote there. But when enough business leaders do come together and say, we want to impose this upon ourselves as well, and it's never a perfect formula, believe me, that's one of the things about bids that make them quite difficult, that there are different levels for different folks. And some of that is based on the fact that if you have a tall building with a single footprint, you know, you don't get a lot extra out of graffiti removal because there's not going to be graffiti on floors two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So some of those complexities get factored into those differences, but some of it is just the politics of the situation, too. Know that we'll be keeping a careful eye. There is a Sunset clause on these things, and I am not going to rubber stamp its renewal if we don't see the goals that have been set by this bid actually reached. Those goals are ambitious. I expect them to be reached, and I expect the city to be a full partner. So at this time, I would ask my colleagues to support this, but still welcome your continued input with this. And if there are problems that arise with the administration of the bid, we'll do everything we can, as I have in the past, to make sure that these are done as democratically and as openly under the Brown Act as can be possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's send that matter forthwith, please, and proceed to the next item.
Mr. President, items number seventy-five and seventy-six are closed-session items. That remains on the desk. Now is time for public comment.
Public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Mr. Mort Allen. I see the pass signal going up there. A.W. Cooper, are you, please come forward at this time to address the council. Yes, and you will be followed by Mr. Jerry England.
Council, good morning, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am dealing with a challenge with the 501(c)(3) that is specifically, excuse me, in Jan Perry's area or in her district. And this 501(c)(3), about two years ago when I resided there, this 501(c)(3) known as the Weingart, which their phone number, you guys probably know, is two-one-three-six-two-seven-nine-thousand. And I was sexually assaulted at this place here. And that was about nineteen ninety-eight, where a gentleman grabbed me by my private parts. And I told him that if he touched me again, I would take him out. Unfortunately, while I am working and the market is bad, I work for a brokerage firm. I've attempted to go back here today for the purpose of staying there temporarily until my money gets better in the market. I was told that I cannot stay there because I threatened the guy. They are right. I threatened him. And I told him that if you ever touch me again, I will take you out. It is wrong for the Weingart to allow me not to be able to reside there when they do not provide the necessary protection. So I am simply asking if the members of city council will look into this. I spoke to a young lady at the Weingart by the name of Cassandra, who was a case manager there. Again, the phone number is two-one-three-six-two-seven-nine-thousand, and no one has done anything. Finally, I visited Governor Gray Davis's office this morning on this matter. I spoke to a staffer there, yada, yada, yada. I went to Bustamante's office, spoke to a staffer there, more yada, yada, yada. From that point, I went to Senator Richard Palanco's office. There's a young lady named Maggie who is looking into it. I'm asking the council here to please do something because when I leave here, I hope to visit Jan Perry's office and give Jan Perry, who is a great councilperson, the opportunity to look into it. If it isn't resolved from that point, I'll just keep going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jerry England.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Jerry England. I'm from Chatsworth. I've been reading in the papers, as I'm sure you have, that there are a few hundred thousand Valley residents that complain that the downtown power structure have been supporting special interest groups. Well, you folks proved that to be the case Friday when you voted to appeal a land use decision that the courts upheld in favor of my communities, my community and my neighbors. What you have agreed to do is spend my money and my neighbor's money to fight your constituents so that Ted Stein, your airport commissioner and a very wealthy man, can get five extra houses, five houses that will destroy an equestrian community in Chatsworth. And it's just the first of many more that'll domino effect off of this deal. I'm really embarrassed for you, and I will tell you that the Ted Stein housing project will be the poster child for Valley secession. You need to start looking at the conservation element in the general plan and understand that there has been a lot of thought about saving agricultural interests and especially horse interests that are a large part of the heritage of this city. If you read the paper last week, there's an article called "Horses in the Hood," where inner-city children are able to benefit by going out and spending some time with horses. It's a good thing to keep a few of them. We're talking an area that's about three-quarters of a square mile, and you guys want to destroy it. So Ted Stein, who earned five-hundred thousand dollars last week to fight secession, can get richer. I'm embarrassed for you.
Thank you for your comments. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Motion's proposed and in referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Councilmember's request from a citizen council. Councilmember Really Thomas requests to be excused on September twentieth to leave at eleven-thirty for city business. This meets policy.
Mr. Really Thomas is excused.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on September eighteenth for personal business. This also meets policy.
Mr. Pacheco. Shall be excused.
Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused on September eighteenth for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Han moves. Ms. Miskowski is excused.
And Councilmember Reyes also requests to be excused September eighteenth for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Reyes is excused.
The desk is clear. Several closed-session items.
Okay, before adjourning into closed session, members, let me just announce that with the excuses approved just a minute ago, that does bring us to a bear quorum for tomorrow evening's meeting. So I would ask for those members still scheduled to attend, to not only make sure you attend, but we'd appreciate your punctuality. Now, in accordance with California law, the council will adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Mr. Clerk, item before us, please.
Item number seventy-six. There's a motion on the table to authorize city attorney to join the PRP group regarding cleanup at Gibson Environmental Site and authorize the city attorney to expend up to seventy thousand in related expenses in settlement of case.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
The desk is clear.
Chair recognizes Ms. Gruel for an announcement. Ms. Gruel. Councilmember Gruel. She's been distracted over there.
You knew I wanted to make an announcement, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
I would like to invite not only my colleagues around here, but those of you listening to our city council meeting at Lakeview Terrace Rec Center tomorrow night. We are having from five to six-thirty a reception where we will have city departments, other agencies that will have materials and information about services provided in the city of Los Angeles. And at six-thirty, we'll have our full council meeting. It should be a great event. I want to show people who've never been out to Lakeview Terrace and Sullen Tahunga area, which includes horse country. Alex and I threatened to come in by horseback, but I think we might have scared people by doing that. But I really hope that you will all come and participate. But I really hope that you will all come and participate and also partake in the best barbecue you're going to have in a long time. So again, to the public, from 5:00 to 6:30, there is an event where you can get information from various city departments as well as participate in our City Council meeting. So I look forward to that and appreciate you making sure we made that announcement today. I had it ready.
And if anybody needs directions to the location, they can call...
485-3391, area code 213, or my district office, 818-755-7676.
Okay, we hope to see you all there. Other announcements?
Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
Members, I do plan to attend the meeting tomorrow night and be on time. I will point out the fact that every time I visit Sunland to Hunga, I got a lot of friends out there. When I showed a lot of concern about the development of a golf course and a horse trail, and they were opposed to it, and other things that they didn't want, I came back and we made sure it didn't happen. And so I got a lot of friends out there, and when the boundaries are drawn and where I have no place to go, I know I can always be welcome at Sunland to Hunga.
I'll be glad to see you.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other announcements? Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just learned that an actor, actress from Los Angeles area, Lawanda Page, died today in Inglewood. She was 81 years old. Some of us may remember her as the fearsome Bible-toting aunt from Stanford and Son. She is survived by a daughter. I think she's originally from Cleveland and acted in many fine television shows and movies. And Ms. Page will be missed. She's survived by her daughter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I request that we adjourn today in the memory of John Anthony Pfeiffer Jr. Anthony, who was fatally hit by a car last week, was only 12 years old and a lifelong resident of San Pedro. Anthony was in the eighth grade at Dana Middle School and went to Taper Elementary School before that. He enjoyed playing with his 10-year-old brother, Michael, who was one of his best friends. Anthony also enjoyed reading and playing video games and has been described as friends as being very smart. Anthony is survived by his parents, John and Nancy Pfeiffer, brother Michael Joseph Pfeiffer, and his grandmother's uncles, aunts, and friends. Anthony will be greatly missed by his friends, his schoolmates, his neighbors, his family, and the entire San Pedro community.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, just last week, we lost a great performer, great entertainer, and one who brought a lot of joy to our life and also involved in public affairs. This is Lionel Hampton. He made us all so happy from time to time, the way he performed. He gave up his time and services to represent us and the White House and around the world as a great musician, writer, director, composer. He will be missed. I was able to see him at a number of clubs in New York. I lived in the area that's Birdland and Bop City, and the list goes on. Lionel Hampton was there performing, and we all enjoyed the way he did it so well.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other tributes? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. It's a sad time in my office because over the weekend, we lost the mother of Susan Bursk. Susan is the director of my West Side office and a good friend and a wonderful person. And her mother, Gertrude Roller, died over the weekend. Mrs. Roller was 90, and she had lived in Los Angeles for quite some time. She'd been a resident of the Carthay Square area for well over five decades, and in the mid-part of this century, she and her husband, Susan's father, opened up the Standard Hardware Store. And I'm looking over at Mr. Labange for any glimmer of recognition. It was over in the Los Anega area. It was back in the old days when we had hardware stores in Los Angeles. And unfortunately, those days are not that long ago, and yet they do seem long gone. It was one of those special neighborhood stores that people came into time after time and really, really appreciated. She is survived by Susan and Susan's husband, Allen, her son, Gary Roller, his wife, Barbara, and her grandchildren, Hayden and Michelle. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're in the West Side there where I represent as well.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Any other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned, and to repeat one last time, the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for tomorrow will not take place at 10:00 a.m. We will be meeting outside of City Hall, Lakeview Terrace, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.